Beer board meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gaines.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stein.
Councilman Manhattan.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Under new business, we have a request from Anderson County Chamber of Commerce for a Class E special event beer permit located at two forty-five North Main Street in Clinton. Mr. Meredith, would you like to speak on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is our annual antique festival. Many of you know, we seek this permit last year. The area was a little small on the beer permit side, so we've expanded the area into this, what we currently call the City Park or the gazebo, to do the beer Friday night as well as Saturday. On Friday, it'd be from five to eight. On Saturday, it'd be eleven AM to four. We will man the three entrances with volunteers and staff to prohibit the beer from even removed from the garden. That's in our application. We're also partnering with Clinch River Brewery, the same company we did last year, that they will be responsible for the bracelets and IDing everybody. So I would hope that you would grant this request for our antique festival.
Any questions for Mr. Meredith? Is this going to be the same location it was last time?
It'd be in the park, right across from it. We were in the parking lot. Now we're moving into the grass area where we had the food, so we could have food and this.
Okay. Your motion for approval?
Is there any kind of limit? I mean, half, I think, times past, have we done limits or anything like that with this? Do you know?
Councilman McBride, under the ABC license, which is these bartenders that are serving have the license, they will, just like if you were any other establishment, if you're beyond that, they wouldn't serve you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Your motion? Your second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Motion to adjourn beer board meeting? Beer board meeting adjourned. Called to order a regular meeting. Roll call, please. Oh, wait a minute. We had the public hearing on this too, don't we?
Yes.
So I need to do the public hearing before we do the regular agenda, right? Let's see. Okay, I'm sorry. Have three different meetings today. Called to order a public hearing. Roll call, please.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stein.
Here.
Councilman Manhattan.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Baris.
Here. Public hearing is on resolution number seven eighty. This is the Sinkin Springs Road annexation and plan of services with the Black Horse Capital Partners. Is anyone here that'd like to speak on that? The second item on the public hearing is ordinance number six forty-four. This is the Sinkin Springs Road zoning. Anybody like to speak on that? Your motion to adjourn the public hearing?
No move.
Public hearing adjourned. Called to order a regular meeting?
Councilman Gaines.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stein.
Here.
Councilman Manhattan.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Still here.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Having motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, the prayer will be given by Councilor Vice Mayor Fair. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly fathers, we gather here to do work on behalf of the city and on behalf of the people that have elected us to these offices. Let us be mindful of the duties that we owe to each other in this community, the duties we owe to you and the obligations we owe to our families. And let us do the work of the city here today with the spirit of harmony and unity that our work would be pleasing unto thee. Also pray that your blessings continue upon our fair city of Clinton, our great county of Anderson, and our great state of Tennessee. All this ask in Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Zach. Hear a motion for the review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated August twenty-six, two thousand nineteen?
No move.
Second.
Having motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens with grievances or praises. Yes, ma'am. Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Dr. Shaleen Bonnie, veterinarian. Address seven five six Blockhouse Valley Road, Clinton, Tennessee. I'm here this evening because I'm requesting a variance to Municipal Code Section ten one oh two for my property. We purchased property that is nearly five acres. I brought pictures of the property for y'all to see. When we purchased this in two thousand seventeen, we're two tenths of a mile within the city limits and we built a thirty thousand dollar fence for large animals. And then we found out about the municipal code. We found out from the neighbor, not from the realtor. So we have a beautiful piece of property that we can't use and we're asking for a variance on this so we can put large animals on it. When we looked for the property in surrounding counties, we found that it was usually Municipal Code of no pigs or roosters, but it wasn't as strict as the Clinton or the municipal code that is Section ten one oh two. The neighbors behind us directly in both corners have horses and all along Blockhouse Valley Road has large animals, which all impede or go against the municipal code. They all are either, some of them have grandfathered in, some of them have grandfathered in incorrectly, but we have animals all along that valley. So we're asking that you consider our request for variance on this property because it is nearly five acres and completely fenced in.
The, unless Roger can jump in too, and Larry, this, I think this process needs to go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals first. Is that right? Does it come here?
The section that regulates the distances under Title ten under having control, that would require a change in the ordinance. It's outside the zoning ordinance.
So what action, what action needs to be, to take place?
Council would need to amend the ordinance.
But we would have to refer that to somebody, wouldn't we, Roger?
Probably just need to look at, let us take a, look at, it's first time I heard of it, so we probably, probably need to look at the situation, see what's, what's going on with it.
So the way it reads now, there's nothing in there as far as acreage or anything like that? I mean...
No, sir. In the thousand foot distances, this ordinance has been in place for thirty years or more that I'm aware of and never had any change to it. So it may warrant looking at it based on the situation.
The surrounding counties, when we looked for houses in the surrounding counties, most of them are no pigs and no roosters. But they don't have this thousand foot that you can't have animals a thousand feet from the road, which is what I do believe this ordinance says. Thousand feet from any house. And so that makes it difficult. And on Blockhouse Valley Road, there's cattle ranches, like cattle farms, that go right up to the road. There's horses that are right next to neighbors' houses, chickens, geese, everything else.
I think a lot of that's probably because it's grandfathered in.
Probably.
But they're not grandfathered in correctly, if I may, because after talking to a neighbor, he purchased the house that had horses on it and he grandfathered in. Well, it says, you're not allowed to do that.
I think you have six months from, if you ever, if like your horse died or you didn't have any animals, you had that six month window. If you didn't have any animals during that period on the, on your farm, so to speak, then that grandfather would be, would be...
But you're talking about changing ownership though, right?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to use my property.
But I still think it's that way.
I have five acres of gorgeous property with a thirty thousand dollar fence that's totally enclosed and I would like to use it, being a veterinarian.
Well, I think that's something we can certainly take a look at.
Would you like?
Especially the...
Get the information and have Jason Stoles go out and speak with him and get, see what the situation is, get all the information, bring it back for us to take a look at.
Jason Stoles has, has been to my property, if it's that Jason. He's already been to my property.
May, may, may I, just real quick, this body is not going to take action right now, suisse spontanee, to say, yep, you're right, bang the gavel, mayor says new law. So what we would like to do, I think, is get with you, get information from you, so we can look at what are the next steps for us to take.
Okay.
It, it sounds reasonable. It sounds like, you know, you've got a great piece of property out there and it probably would fit for what you're doing, but we need to just gather more facts.
Great, and...
Does that make sense?
That does.
Okay.
And then, is it, if it's Jason Stoles, he's been to the property not once but twice. Recommended I come and talk to y'all, so.
And I think between this meeting and the future meetings, I would just, I would just call Roger.
Roger.
And, and talk about it and you can just...
You want pictures of the property?
No, we'll take your word on it.
Okay.
I'm sure it's beautiful.
It is gorgeous.
Probably involve our guys, expert Joe Barrett, who is, who's, who helps us with zoning and everything and he could probably help us to construct what we need to have there too.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You approach the podium, so everybody at home can see and hear you too.
My name is Michael Shields. I'm Dr. Bonnie's husband. So who, who do we go to next or what, what is the?
Roger.
Roger, and your last name, Roger?
Houck. H-O-U-C-K.
Houck, okay. So we'll...
We just call you.
Just call me here at City Hall, then I'll get the information. We'll follow up with, with getting your office information and I'll also talk to Jason and see what's been going on with it.
And how long before we give you a call?
Um, probably Wednesday, I guess meeting tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. You know, I think they bring up a good point because I think what we have right now pretty much blankets the whole city and especially Blockhouse Valley and out that way. There's some large, very large tracts of land that would be appropriate for large farm animals. I don't know if you want to get into...
Some sort of language in there, a minimum acreage or something like that?
Yeah, some type of minimum acreage and maybe if, you know, if you got a, have a development there, their HOA, you know, doesn't approve that, then maybe that supersedes any, any ordinance. I don't know how you can word it. I don't know what we can, if we can do that or not. But I think if we look at other counties in the area and cities, we could probably get a good indication of what everybody else is doing.
Joe will be able to pull off.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up to us. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Donna Rains. I live at seven zero two nine Marley Park Boulevard. My shop address in Clinton is three fifty-five Market Street and I've been there for twenty years. But I'm here tonight. Mine is fairly easy. Christmas is approaching quicker than we want it to. And we are so excited about the new construction that's going to take place on Market Street. But for forty years, we've had a Christmas tree lighting and I'm here to ask tonight if you guys will consider purchasing. We would like to have three Christmas trees for Market Street. We have two planters that are empty. We could put two trees in the planters and then maybe one at the crosswalk. We have a large event planned for Friday night, December the sixth. Last year at the event, it's called the Tree Lighting and the Cookie Crawl. We had over a thousand people attend the event and we think it's going to hopefully double in size this year. But we're almost at panic point, you know, over Christmas trees. That's number one. The second thing I want to ask is, Market Street lights that go on the poles, we're so grateful for the lights you guys put up there and we want to know if the lights can be switched out this year. For years, we've had the wreath lights and we really want all the lighting we can get on Market Street because it's a little attraction, you know, during, well, every day, but especially the holidays for families and pictures and everything. If we could have some of the angel lights that you all already have and some of the Christmas ornament lights that you already have, if you could just swap our wreaths with those. And that's, that's all I have.
Mayor, I can answer that. The other lights that she's referring to are not made for those poles. They will not fit on. Those are made for the poles on Main Street. They're, and correct me JB, you may, mayor may not know, those are done on like five or six foot
Okay.
decorations and, and the ones on Market are only like thirty-six inches.
Okay.
The ones that we got for Market were specifically designed for those poles, so that's why they go there. This late, and when I say it's this late, it doesn't sound like it is, but for commercial lighting, it would, it would be tough to get new ones in and those things are not cheap. They're, they're usually three to four hundred, five hundred dollars a decoration for the commercial style. So it'd be tough this year.
Okay.
Second, on the, the tree lighting, we can look at something, to do something permanent for a tree on Market Street. Of course, we're losing the Market Street Park. You know, eventually too, we'll be losing the planters under Phase Two that we'll talk about later. We'll, we'll be doing something up there. We'll be redoing some streetscaping, sidewalking, water lines that we just had an issue with a week and a half ago. So we're re-correcting some of that also.
Okay.
But, you know, we may be able to do something on a temporary basis for some trees up there. The main new city tree, we were talking about planting down here in front of the Memorial Community Center, a rather large one because there's really nowhere to plant a large one up on the Market Street or Main Street area. So, but we can still look at doing, doing some decorations, something up there, working with merchants.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
You know, it's like I said, we've got that huge event on December sixth and we want our downtown to be perfect.
Right.
So, but thank you.
Okay.
Will you be getting back with us on that or what do we need to do?
We can. We can have JB get with you and we'll talk about what, what can be done in, in Main, Main and Market Street areas down to Broad.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jane Holt and I'm at six oh eight South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. And we've recently, of course, built there and moved into our home. And of course, I've, I've worked in Clinton for thirty-two years. I've been involved in the antique business here for about twenty-eight years, starting with Judy Ray up at the building next to where the old Hammer's store was, up on that end of the street. And I hope one day to get to retire and to do the antique business full-time, but now I'm at Clinch River Mercantile with my daughter Laura and the antique industry here, of course, is growing and we have, antiquing is basically the ultimate recycle because we're using furniture that has been around for quite some time and the millennials have now come to realize this and they are coming to see us in, in really droves. And what I would like to tell you about the billboards is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. One tenth of one percent of Clinton's annual budget goes towards those billboards. It's actually point one one five of the thirteen million dollar plus budget that Clinton has and the fifteen thousand dollars is point one one five of that total budget. And I know you all have heard this before, but, but Clinton is number nine of the Fodder's Travel of the best antique tech, uh, best antiquing towns in the United States. And people do come from all over. They see the billboards, they get off the interstate. They also see the billboards, even if they weren't looking for them, and get off the interstate and come to downtown Clinton. And as you know, they stay, they eat, they get gas and they come here and shop. And originally, I have been told that the hotel motel tax was designated to possibly pay for those billboards and last year, the city collected a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in hotel motel tax. And so I think that more than covers those billboard costs. And I have some, some visual aids that I would like you guys to, to take a look at. About the, being the number nine of ten in the antique world. But anyway, that's all I have and does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you all.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to add a little bit to what Jane said. I'm Junead Cox. I live at one hundred Elm Street and I operate a business at three forty Market Street called Fine Things. And my first question is to Mr. McBride. I think you are our representative for downtown, right?
Well, I think we all represent everywhere. I mean, my district or I ran or I run based on my district, which is Eagle Bend and South Clinton, so.
So the answer to that is yes.
Yes.
So I expect you to have our best interest at heart, along with all the rest of you. I've been downtown for thirty-five years and it hasn't been an easy journey. We've worked very hard. We've worked with Lamar on reskining the billboards and those are really a lifeline to downtown. And when you erase those billboards, you're going to erase a tremendous amount of traffic that comes to downtown Clinton. Not only do they come to downtown, they go everywhere in Clinton and they come back. And guys, I just want you to think a lot about it because when I'm looking, when I'm on the interstate, I'm not hunting schools or property and I don't think there's many people that are. But they're looking for a destination and a place to go enjoy themselves and they find it in Clinton. So I think you ought to think really hard and take a good look at what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Speak now or forever hold your peace? All right. Under communications from the mayor, I have a, an award to, to announce and give praise to. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the city of Clinton by Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to Gail Cook and this is the third straight year that Gail has achieved this and her staff have achieved, achieved this. So we just want to give public notice of that and once again, say thank you, Gail, for all you do. Only other thing I have as far as communications and, and I'm kind of trying to, to partner with the county on this. For, for years now, we've been looking for a, the county's been looking for a senior center in, in the Clinton area and it's been challenging to say, to say the least on this. And, and as most of y'all know, when they, when they build the TCAT, which is supposed to break ground next month, when that is built, Ron State will leave the armory and, and go in with TCAT. So that's, after they break ground, it should be, I say twelve months, give or take a couple of months on either end. It could be, it could be ten to twelve month or fourteen months. But I would like to, to offer in principle, with, with, with a motion from the council, that we offer the armory when it's available for a dollar a year. And we'll ask Mr. Houck to negotiate that with whoever is designated on the county side to, to negotiate that with the understanding that it needs to be available for the month of July for the, for the fair. And, and all the other costs associated with, associated with that, again, will be negotiated with, with Mr. Houck. But, you know, there's talking about, we've already spent, well, we, I'm saying the county, over six hundred thousand dollars and that didn't work out. And now I think they're looking for something maybe closer to a half a million dollars. And we have a very good building, I feel like, that's flat, good parking area, middle of a park. You know, if they just put a hundred thousand dollars towards the building, maybe improve what they want to improve, maybe the bathrooms, maybe the kitchen and have that fully stocked and, and I think, I think that'd be a great, another great example of a city and county working together for the common good. So I would entertain a motion on that. We can have some discussion if you'd like.
No move.
Having motion is second. Any further discussion?
Would this have to be any agreement with the county in order to do this or strictly senior citizens taking sort of ownership of it, I guess?
Well, I think you'd have to go through the county from all the grants and stuff that come through. I think a lot of the grants go through the county to the senior center. So that would be my understanding. Rick, am I right in that? Okay. So that's the only reason why we'd, we'd go through the county on that.
Any improvements would have to, who would?
Well, that'd be more of an, I think it'd be more negotiating with, with Roger and whoever, probably County Mayor Frank. But again, my, my recommendation is if you're going to go ahead and spend four or five hundred thousand dollars, well, go ahead and put a hundred thousand in the armory.
Yep.
And, and I think what I see mostly, you can improve probably the bathrooms, but you definitely need to improve the kitchen.
Windows, heat and air.
And, and, well, heat and air probably might be negotiated, but the windows could do that, could be that. But I would think a hundred thousand would, would cover that easily and...
Similar contract with the county before when it was the alternative school. We gave it to them pretty much rent free, but they were responsible for any, any capital projects that was maintenance. Of course, the schools went in, put a new roof on it, upgraded the heat and air system. They even upgraded the security system. So a lot of that the county has already done and have the plans where they, they accomplished that. You know, it's been fifteen years ago now, so some of those things probably need to be replaced. But as the mayor said, it's still a pretty good deal because it's a, it's a solid building, good parking, middle of town. It'd also have the use of recreation facilities that they could use while they were there, so it'd be, I, I would think is...
Right now, the senior center's paying fifteen hundred dollars a month in where they're at today. So that's eighteen thousand dollars a year that can free up and use it for programs for the seniors.
Because current sites behind Walgreens?
Yes.
Mr. Staley, would this cause any interaction with the Fair Association, any problems?
No, I was talking to Mr. Burton. He seems to be in the contract four weeks.
Yeah, right now, our current agreement is that, that they get a minimum of three weeks, but I think that they probably use it a little more on the front end right now, so we can negotiate that.
Yeah.
I spoke briefly with some of the administrative people with the senior center. They'd be more than happy to work with the fair.
Yeah, and we will need wording. In Mr.'s case, the fair goes to August or, or June or whatever to have that flexibility in the contract, wherever, whenever the fair is, to have that period of time available for that, so.
That would be my only concern is transitioning from the senior center, senior center in June to, to, to be able to use it for the fair because, you know, all the booths have to come in. That means that any sort of permanent structures that they have in there may have to be removed, cleaned.
Right. Well, well, we've, we've, how long was the alternative school there? Twelve, fifteen years probably.
So there's precedent, what you're saying, there's precedent for doing it and they did it.
Oh, yeah, it was five, yeah. It's not five. And, and you got to think during that time too, and, and we've talked about that. My suggestion would be number one, we've got a community center.
Right.
And we can use that. I think, it might be a time for them to refocus and maybe a week just to have vacation for, for the staff.
I think it's what they talked about doing, take a couple of weeks off.
But also keep in mind, it's in July. There's sixteen county schools that are empty. I mean, the middle school gym is empty. They could use the middle school gym. I mean, for a dollar a year, there might be some type of inconvenience, but you, you, I mean, you're coming out ahead and again, you're using those dollars for the seniors and not just for rent.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Just for my information, is it my understanding that there's a legal arrangement there that we have to abide by as far as obligating us to allow the fair a certain amount of time?
I think there's always been one, but, but we're not, we're not changing that obligation from what it's been in the past.
We need to make sure that's observed in, in the kind of agreement.
Yeah, we, we talked about that and...
Go back to the early nineteen thirties when the Fair Association did it...
Go back to the early nineteen thirties, when the Fair Association deeded that J.C. Park, or good portion of J.C. Park to the city, that there is a deed restriction, that Fair, Anderson County Fair Association gets the use of that park so many months, so many weeks out of the year, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Uh, community reports, city school board report, Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, a couple of, uh, quick updates regarding Clinton City Schools, it's hard to believe, but we are getting ready to, uh, finish up our first nine weeks of school. So we're almost a fourth of the week, or four, fourth of the way through this school year, which is super hard to believe. We will be ending that next Thursday, and then our fall break will be held the week of, uh, Sept-, uh, October seventh through the eleventh, so school will be closed that week. I wanted to let each one of you know, we celebrated last month that we were, um, we received the distinction of being an exemplary district. There was actually twenty-one districts out of a hundred and forty-seven that achieved that distinction across the state of Tennessee. And so now, as you are coming in one of the four, um, entrances to the city limits, appreciate Roger and his department, but we purchased welcome to Clinton signs, and we're letting everyone know that Clinton City Schools is an exemplary district. We did a little bit better on our measuring this year, so you can actually see these signs as opposed to the teeny tiny ones that we held up last year, so. Uh, we left room, or hopefully we'll be able to add some subsequent years, um, in the future to that, but we are certainly proud of that. And I do want to make a note to let you know that we do, when we enroll students at Clinton City Schools, um, the positive PR that we are putting out about the success of our district is proving to be successful. You'd be surprised, the number of parents that will move into the Clinton community because they have heard about Clinton City Schools. So our community is something, um, something to be proud of. Um, also, I wanted to let you know that, um, this year, we're partnering with the Chamber in a little bit of a different way. In the past, we have done our monthly Clinton City Chronicle issues, where we've highlighted different things that are going on in Clinton City Schools. But just to keep it fresh and keep, uh, people's interest in it, we have partnered, and we are working with Taylor Martin and Southern Made Marketing, and they actually spent two days in our district, and they captured over three hundred clips of videos of what makes Clinton City Schools unique. So instead of doing the Clinton City Chronicles this year, we will be releasing, um, a series of six digital videos, and each month will highlight something special about Clinton City Schools. So a lot of, uh, people in the community were interviewed as part of that, uh, Mayor Burton was interviewed as part of that, um. But we will, uh, the six series, the first one will be on what makes Clinton City Schools unique, then we will have a segment on our academic achievement, our STEM and technology initiatives, our Blaze well-rounded activities, um, also, um, our health and, um, our health services that we provide students, and then we'll end with all of our positive partnerships that we have with community members, so look for those to come on social media very soon. And then I also wanted to pass out to you an invitation to our Fall Cookout. Archie and his team at the Fu- Clinton Fire Department is our great partners to us, and so every fall and every spring, he and his boys come over, and they grill out a fresh hamburger, and, uh, the kids and families and the community comes together, and we eat on the lawn of each one of the elementary schools. But for the public, those are coming up, they're spread out a little bit, um, further apart this year, but North Clinton is gonna be on September the thirtieth. South Clinton will be on October the third, and then Clinton Elementary will be on November the first. And so we welcome anyone that's watching, or any, uh, body that is here tonight, to come and join us for a fabulous Clinton Fire Department hamburger on that day. And then just to let you know where we are with our Blaze and all the fun, wonderful, well-rounded activities that are going on, you'll see wonderful academic learning taking place until two forty-five, and then after school, we are, uh, fully engrossed in cross-country, our swim team is practicing two times a week, our basketball team is practicing, we, our dance team is in action, and they are practicing. Our art clubs at each one of the schools are up and running. Um, also, we have a reader society that is getting ready to start in all three schools, and then at South Clinton and North Clinton, we have a special group that is called the Orf Ensemble, and if you came to the tree ceremony, you heard our Orf Ensemble present, but it is a percussion band that, uh, Mr. Glasshauser does, where they write and create their own music. And so that is, uh, something special that he does, and so we have now an Orf Ensemble, um, as well as our fifth and sixth grade band. So those are just a few of the well-rounded activities that are taking place, and just another thing that makes Clinton City unique. So any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly?
Sounds like a blazing good time.
We're having a blazing good time, uh, Scott Ray does have a budget amendment to bring to you tonight.
Thanks, Kelly. Wow, you probably just thought of it.
I'm surprised that you remember this.
Yeah.
We have our, uh, first budget amendment for the year, and it was, uh, we didn't get it online in a timely manner, so Gail's gonna get that, uh, to y'all on Dropbox as soon as possible. I apologize for that. The Board of Ad approved a budget amendment number one, it basically, uh, increased appropriations by three hundred and five thousand dollars. And how are we paying for that increase in expenditures? We are increasing our revenue projections by two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and we had a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar budgeted surplus at the beginning of the year. So the balance, the sixty thousand will come from that. I know that sounds like a lot of dollars, but I do not have any reason to believe that we won't realize our revenues. And, uh, when I propose a budget at the beginning of the year, I'm very conservative with revenues, and I tend to overestimate the expenditures. So I do not have any reason to believe we won't realize, uh, our revenues again. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, some of the detail behind it is we're purchasing fifty thousand dollars in textbooks. Um, we've got an increase in some contracted services, uh, and, uh, some architect fees that we're gonna start accounting for as we look into our school buildings.
Here a motion for, to approve budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion? Is, is that increase, that large increase, is that primarily due just to increase in students that would give you the, the money to?
Well, textbooks is fifty thousand, and there's a.
No, I'm talking about the, the budget, the dollars that add, that came to that, was it three hundred and seven thousand?
Three hundred and five.
But the two hundred, was that mostly from increase?
Uh, most of, uh, two hundred and forty of it was for some planned building improvements that we'd like to realize this year.
But the two hundred, where's that two hundred and forty coming from, you say revenue, there's not a lot of places y'all can get revenue, so increase in taxes, thank you. Okay, okay.
Yes, 'cause our BEP, when we originally proposed our budget, we had a decrease in students. That's kinda turned around, and we'll get that money back.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Herron?
Yes.
Councilman Steny?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Yes, budget amendment number one passes.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Report, Councilman Gann?
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on September the ninth, twenty nineteen. Uh, applicant William Stevenson and Blythe Sanders requesting final plan review for property located at Lee Road. This was a re-division of property, uh, for development at a later date, and that was approved. Second applicant Ned Ferguson requesting site plan approval for property located at two oh five Lamar Avenue, and that applicant, uh, requested this be deferred. Third applicant Rogers Group requesting final plot review for property located at twenty-four twelve North Charles G Severs Boulevard, property is zone B four. This also was a property, uh, revision, uh, and so that was also approved. As a matter of fact, the, the neighboring, uh, property owner already had part of his building on their property, so needed to re, redraw the lines. Uh, applicant Christie Hicks requesting planned unit development review for property located at Alpine Drive. This is a planned unit development and meets those guidelines, what we call a PUD, and, uh, that was, uh, moved to carry. And then applicant STNL Clinton LLC requesting site plan approval for property located at Fox Family Lane. This property is zone B four, this is the site for the new tractor supply, and that also was approved by the planning commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals also met on September the ninth. Applicant STNL Clinton LLC requesting maximum width for non-residential access from thirty to thirty-four feet located at Fox Family Lane. This is so they can, uh, get their supply trucks, the semis, in a little bit easier, so, uh, we granted them an additional four feet of road space there on the other side of Fox's on the main road. Uh, and then applicant Christie Hicks requesting twenty-four, twenty-foot building separation, once again, for a PUD, planned uni- uh, unit development located at Alpine Drive, and, uh, this also was approved by the BZA. Any questions?
Hey, Mr. Gann, the tractor supply, is that entirely on the city property, or is this some entire thing?
I think Mr. Fox bought that several years ago, and it's, uh, I think there was some discussion, some of it maybe in the county, but my understanding, it's all in the city.
They re-annexed the second time, okay.
Any other questions for Councilman Gann? Thanks, Larry. CUB Report, Councilman Farron?
Yeah, um, just wanna say, our new board member, Steve Clapp, uh, attended his first meeting, it's a great addition to the board, and I commend the mayor for, for his wisdom in appointing Mr. Clapp, but he's gonna bring a lot of knowledge and experience to the board that will benefit CUB well. I wanna reiterate, I think there's some misinformation, at least I've heard out in the public. All recommendations and resolutions regarding the residential development plan that was implemented earlier this spring have been implemented or in force and currently, um, guiding CUB's policies and procedures. So just, if you hear anything out there that, that those policies aren't in effect, they are, they, it's taken a while for us to get them into perhaps, um, a form that we can disseminate to, to the public, but anyone that's interested in residential development, you are gonna be under these policies and procedures that were passed this spring, twenty nineteen. My understanding, talking to a few developers, they've really enjoyed, um, I think, uh, a, a new attitude at CUB, a positive attitude at CUB, one that's encouraging residential development as well as industrial development, and, um, I think that, the, the future at CUB looks very strong. I wanted to just say, right now, we are in a very good cash position, uh, we're positive, uh, on the water side, the water and sewer side. There was, uh, those of you that are in the CrossFit world, you've, you had your world disrupted, I think, Saturday morning down on Market Street, and several other store members at Market Street, I'm very proud of the response that CUB had, matter of fact, our general manager was out there, um, almost immediately, and as I drove by, I had to take a double take, I was like, uh, that's Greg Fay. I think it speaks to the dedication, CUB, if there's a problem, we wanna get it fixed, and no one's perfect, and I'm not saying that we are, but I'm very proud of the work that we've done and the response that we've had. I think that you're gonna see in the future, um, CUB working in concert with the city on some of these grants, some of the things that we're wanting to do down at Market Street, down on Main Street, and so I look forward to having a great partnership, um, between the city and the utility going forward. Any questions?
Any questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach, I appreciate it, any, uh, anything, uh, under other reports, other committees?
One, one thing I neglected there, uh, the planning commission also had a discussion, we are working on a P one district, which we're working with in connection with the Aspire people, and they have kind of given us their wish list of what they would like to see them, them be able to do, uh, in the Aspire Park area, and we're kind of debating with them on some of the issues and everything, but we're working together on, to try to develop a P one district that would satisfy their needs and what we also find acceptable. So if any of the, the public has questions or issues there, uh, we certainly welcome their input.
What kind of timeframe you looking on that?
Uh, I, I'm sure the Aspire people would like to have it as quickly as possible. I think we'll probably, uh, we've asked them, they gave us a general idea of what they would want at the last meeting, and we've kind of asked them to, let's get specific and tell us exactly what you want so we can construct something, so I would, I would anticipate within the next several months.
Can we draw from other counties or cities that have done this?
I'm sure, well, again, you're looking at a unique situation, you're looking at a publicly, you, you know, at a private park, uh, that where we're gonna look at, at zoning, a, a private development, a park development.
Well, we do that with property in general.
Well, we do that, but.
But not with the park.
You know, this, this situation, for example, uh, one of the things that, that came up was that, uh, there are several events that they would like to have the ability to have onsite accommodations, and our question was, okay, how much of this park is gonna be devoted to accommodations? You know, we wanna, we don't want to see it turned into a resort rather than a park, so we wanna kind of set some guidelines as to, okay, this is acceptable, this is too much, because I know they've got some events on the planning that they'd like to see. But generally, we're, we're in a very cooperative situation, but at the same time, we do wanna have something that, that not only, uh, invites people, but also meets what we want to see it there.
You know, I know it's really early in the stages of this, but as you were talking, I was thinking, you know, you have a P one, that umbrella over that property, which would be, my understanding would be tax exempt, when you rezone and put things in there, it's bringing money in, how is that, as far as taxes collected and sales tax and all that? And property tax.
I'm not sure what the guidelines are there.
That'd be interesting to see how that, how that, how that's.
This is, this is a new ballgame for us.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to find out what that is, so, good luck with that. Any other, any other questions for Larry? Thanks again, Larry. Um, General, General Government Report, Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Mayor. TAP grant, we were notified of the approval of our Tennessee Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Program Phase One Grant Application. The project will provide for pedestrian improvement, streetscaping, from the Walking Trail, Lakefront Park, along East Broad, North Main Street to North Hick Street and Cullum Street. The project has a total cost of seven hundred eight thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. We now, we have now accepted the formal award of this grant, are in the process of completing various forms, documents relative to the project. We therefore re- request authorization for the execution of the necessary forms, contracts, and other documents relative to the project as they are required.
Here a motion for approval? Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roger, I want to commend you and, and staff, uh, for doing this grant, I mean, we really didn't get a lot of publicity from this, but there's a, a total of a seven hundred and eight thousand dollar grant, um, that we're getting, and, and we're, you'll find next time, we're, I mean, next paragraph, we're gonna be asking for phase two. Um, hopefully, that hundred and forty-one that's gonna be our responsibility will be shared some way with CUB, since they'll be having the opportunity to move their water lines and, and everything else, and sewer under the sidewalks versus under the streets. So, um, frustrating thing is, when you talk about grants, it's gonna be about three years before we start moving dirt on this. But, um, one good thing is, these phase two and phase three's coming out, they'll just be a year behind that, so once the ball starts rolling, it will continue to roll until we, we, we have some type of completion, regardless of, if we get, you know, two phases or four phases or whatever. There's one city that's on, was it on the seventh phase? So there's a lot of money to be had with this grant, we're gonna take full advantage of it. Any other questions? Thoughts? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, as the mayor said, we are currently finalizing preliminary plans for phase two of TAP grant project. The phase two project will be an extension of phase one project in the downtown Market Street area. The application must be submitted in early October. Based on our plans for the continuing this project, we would request authorization to submit a project application and apply for funding through the TDOT Transportation Alp- Alternative Program for twenty twenty City of Clinton Transportation Alternative Program Phase Two. Uh, we had a public meeting prior to this one, we're still in the process of getting all the numbers together, we have a resolution that council has to pass, um, later in this meeting, because everything has to be done before we meet again. Uh, we will probably ask for somewhere in the, I would say in the dollar figure of a million dollars for this grant. Meeting with TDOT officials, that's kind of what they recommend it, not to go, go for anything under a million, because it's, uh, a pretty competitive grant, but there's only probably a lot of dozen cities that was awarded this grant statewide this year, so we'll go after as much money as we can.
You wanna tell them what phase two is gonna cover?
Well, phase two will probably be most of Market Street up to Cullum, is what we're looking at right now. I know some of the business owners was kind of worried when we would start, you're probably talking, if we get the grant, if we apply for it now, you're probably talking forty years at the earliest before we'd ever seen it work, it's just, that's the grant process.
Motion to approve? Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, as you are aware, as we have discussed previously, Harbor Drive and Hidden Harbor subdivision was originally planted, and is in excess in utility easement. As you are aware, as we have discussed previously, Harbor Drive in Hidden Harbor subdivision was originally planted as an excess in utility easement when annexed in nineteen eighty-three. Several development issues have surfaced over the last thirty years with the entire subdivision, including some more recent issues with the Harbor Drive area itself. Some more recent development, properties, re-subdivisions, and property sales have once again brought to light that some lots on Harbor Drive do not currently qualify for building lots as they do not have front, as ex, front, as a frontage accepted to the public street. In order to correct these issues and remove the discrepancies, we have worked with the city attorney and our engineers to determine a more permanent solution. In order to proceed, we would need to conduct title searches for the affected property, survey the existing conditions, replat the road and right-of-way, and to re, reconstruct the current substandard portion of the road to the at least minimum standards. Based on these needs, we would request council's authorization to proceed as follows. Authorize the city attorney to proceed with the necessary title searches. Authorize our consulting engineer to proceed with the survey, design, and replanning to reimburse the developer for work done on the city's behalf and to reconstruct the substandard portion of Harbor Drive to a minimum accepted profile. Total estimated cost to be approximately three hundred thousand, which we have previously assigned two hundred and fifty thousand.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, second, and a third. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Excuse me, Mayor. I think talking to Mr. Houck over the period of time we've discussed this, I think the one statement he's made over this problem we've had since eighty-three was this is the right thing to do. And I think, once this is corrected, I think that area will fill up overnight. It's a beautiful area. A lot of lost golf balls are probably still down there from many years ago. You never played there, Jim? Okay. Anyway, but I think the statement, it's the right thing to do. I think that's, that's, that's what we need to vote on.
Well, that's one, one thing I'm proud about, this staff and this council is, we always, we always strive to do the right thing. And this is one, another problem that, an issue that's been going on for thirty years that, that we've addressed and taken care of.
The last eighteen holes of golf I played two weeks ago, I used the same ball the whole time. Thank you.
Well, I heard.
It's never happened in my life, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, I heard you didn't hit it far anyway, so you couldn't lose it.
I, I won.
Had a good partner.
I won.
This make mention also is, this, this is coming out of the Capitol Project fund that we've saved for, and we have it there for, for cases like this. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm at on the third of Gail.
You've got your sales tax report through June. Keep in mind, we're still running two months behind. I used to, was able to post one month, and now with the way we get our information from the state, usually I can't do that. So when you look at a comparison of this fiscal year to last, you'll see kind of a diff, and that's the difference. And last year, I was able to post some state shared revenue, and this, this year, I wasn't able to do that. We got our tax roll-in, Gina's in the process of trying to get it loaded into our system. And our tax aggregate, our estimates for budget, we were within three thousand dollars of that. So that's, we always like to see that we're fairly close on our estimates, and we were this year. The fund balance that you see beginning is, is pretty much our final numbers for the year. We've got a couple of small adjustments to make, but that's pretty much final numbers. If you look at our totals compared to where we were at last year, we're about two hundred and seven thousand less total fund balance of what we were last year. But keep in mind that last year, we had obligated or reserved about a million dollars for a fire truck, which we now own and, and don't have that reserve. So all things said, we're in an even better shape than what we were last year.
Any questions for Gail?
I ask this probably every two, three months, the delinquent tax.
How's that proceeding as?
We'll, we'll probably have a tax sale in November.
I think he's, he's got something on.
He's proceeding on.
Yeah.
The letters went out, I know some of them were saved, because I got a few phone calls, so, so the letter went out.
Has it caused a few people to come in and pay delinquent taxes?
Well, of course, keep in mind, they don't pay us, they pay at the clerk of master. And so that's, again, another timing issue, sometimes that's a month plus before we even know it. So I know there's been one or two smaller ones that have, have cleaned up since then.
Yeah, we're probably looking at a dozen properties.
So once this happens, I mean, again, this was the first time the city's done this. Will this be part of our normal process each year?
Well, it kind of depends upon what the county does.
I know, but.
The county's scheduled for a tax sale, they've been trying to do one now, I think, for over a year. And I'm not sure what year they're selling, but if, if the county picks it up, we don't have to do it.
Correct.
But if not, then yes, we will continue.
But if the county doesn't, we are prepared now.
Yes.
This is the first one we've done?
That I'm aware of.
So we're prepared now, we've kind of got our game plan, we know how this works. And if the county doesn't, we're ready to pull the trigger our, on our own.
That's correct.
Delinquent sale or tax. Okay, good.
Any other questions? Thanks, Gail.
Thanks, Gail. Just an update before it gets brought up, Magnet Mills, Jason Stokes had sent me a letter last week. Since he delivered a letter to Mr. Hong on the twentieth, cleanup demolition did start back up about two weeks ago. And they've been moving pretty, pretty quick. I know one day last week, there was as many as five dump trucks. They've moved a couple of other backhoes in, a couple of other pieces of equipment, and they've been, been cleaning up. And he's spoken with them several times since, and they plan on continuing cleaning up till they get it finished. So just a little update there. Police department need to surplus a vehicle. We have removed from the following, from, from service, we recommend it be cleared surplus and placed on GovDeal's website for disposal, a two thousand three Ford van ambulance that was used for our crime scene vehicle.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Update on a couple of other projects, Eagle Ben, Councilman McBride asked about it. Pal Clint's finished up early last week and Public Works moved back in, doing, finishing up the grade work. They should be done by no later than the end of this week. We did receive price estimates on the asphalting. Roger's group was the best price, will be around twenty-two thousand. So we'll hire them to come in and do the asphalt work. They've told us, hopefully, by the, sometime next week, they can move in and do the asphalting. So hopefully, here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have Eagle Ben reopen to the public, everything going. Westwood Estates, we got an update this morning on them. That's Duracap, they'll move in a week from today and start the milling process, the milling process on the road. And that'll take about a week to do. Then they'll move in the following Monday, two weeks from today, and start asphalting. They're anticipating a week to a week and a half, and they'll have that done, so probably about a two to two and a half week process.
Good.
And the notification call went out today.
And you get the call. We did a reverse code read to the everybody that lives in Westwood Estates. South Clinton Park inclusive playground project started a week and a half ago, and they're working. Probably anticipated about two weeks from now, we should be done with that, that project.
Great, great.
Any other questions for Roger?
Yes, Roger, bring back the Magnet Mills. Is there a prospective owner, or is that fallen through, or?
I have not talked to anybody on that one, don't know.
To the last you've heard, there was possibly a buyer?
Back when we talked to him last month, they said they had a contract, I guess. But nothing, definitely, nothing we've seen.
Okay.
Roger, have you addressed all the curves at, in Westwood that you're going to address prior to?
Prior to, we have, what we're going in doing, a little bit asphalt, just to control the water, once we get paid advance.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances and resolutions, you don't have to kind of go, go up and down a little bit, not, not the flow of the agenda just because that's what Bill told me to, so I've got to do that. But no, it's a certain process we have to follow on this. So under Resolution Number Seven Eighty, Seeking Springs Road Annexation and Plan of Services. This is the second reading, and this is with the Black Horse Capital Partners. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number Seven Eighty passes on second reading. Moving, going back up to ordinance number six forty-four, this is the Seeking Springs Road zoning. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
No.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes. Yes, ordinance number six forty-four passes on second and final reading. Resolution Number Seven Eighty-two, this is the Economic Impact Plan with the Black Horse Capital Partners. And this is the, this would be the TIF for them. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
This is the property at the Glen Alpine area.
Yes, yes.
Just for clarification.
Would anybody like to speak? Just to kind of. Can you talk about timeframe and list all the restaurants that are going to come in and all that?
Wish I could. So my name's Andy Hilmer, I'm with Black Horse Capital Partners, my address is fifty-eight twenty Walden Drive in Knoxville. You know, we've been working on this project for two years. And as soon as we got into it, we realized there's an opportunity there to improve the access, improve the roadways, and really have a development there, you know, about sixteen acres or so that we can develop over the next five years. So our first phase will be retail, we'll have two retail centers, hopefully, and then we'll have an out parcel for a fast casual restaurant or a restaurant or an other type of retail user. And we're looking to get started on this. As soon as we get through these approvals, we'll be getting, hitting the ball rolling before the end of the year so we can try to start moving dirt and getting the road, you know, to grade and everything before it gets real cold. So that's our game plan, we're excited about it. You know, the help with the Industrial Development Board, the Chamber, the city and the county have been great with the whole process. And I think you guys are going to be really proud of what, what we're going to be doing there, so.
Well, y'all have been, y'all have been great to work with. You know, they, they did the Firehouse Little Strip Center there, and, and I think all the developers we work with have been fantastic. And hopefully, you spread the word.
Yeah.
How friendly we are.
We're, we're definitely spreading it, that's for sure.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number Seven Eighty-two passes. Resolution Number Seven Eighty-three, this is the Economic Impact Plan for STNL Development. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Which one is this one, Roger?
This is Tractor Supply.
Is anyone here for Tractor Supply? Would you like to speak, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Dave Howitz, I'm with STNL Development. We are a parent company for STNL Clinton. We're the developers of the Tractor Supply Store. I'm, I'm not an employee of Tractor Supply, I'm, I'm an employee of the developer. Just real briefly, STNL is a preferred developer for Tractor Supply, and we've done hundreds of stores over the last twenty-five years. So we're very experienced. This store idea came about, it was not a, a for sure thing by any means. It's a very thin economic deal for Tractor Supply because of the surrounding stores. It's an infill location. And this store would not have gotten past first base if it wasn't for the availability of the TIF and the support and prodding of, of the Chamber. Project is, I think, a good one. It's best case slated to begin construction in November. We've got to get a lot done in order for that to happen. Worst case, it would start construction in the spring. It's a good project, as I said, from Tractor Supply's standpoint. Would not impact any Tractor Supply stores in the surrounding areas. It's a straight add of stores, there, there won't be a store that'll close because of this. They are attracted to the interstate presence because of the opportunity to pick up customers that, that don't necessarily live in Clinton but are visiting Clinton for various reasons. It's a three-point-seven million dollar project in terms of cost. And the parcel that we're buying, I understand, has a tax base now of seven thousand a year, and we expect that that will increase to fifty-six thousand with our project. Tractor Supply average store across America is about a three-point-seven million dollar sales figure, which equates to just under a hundred thousand dollars in sales tax for the county and the city, as I understand it. That's about all I can think of for a summary. If y'all have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number Seven Eighty-three passes. Resolution Number Seven Eighty-four, this is the Economic Impact Plan for SW Clinton Partnership. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Kristi, would you like to talk?
Kristi Hicks, nine-seven-one Anethole Lane in Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm one of the members of SW Clinton Partnership along with Tim George, and couldn't get him off the farm to join me tonight. So we have partnered with Bill Seeley and Bill Walls out of Nashville, Tennessee. They've done several developments, two in our county, one in Oak Ridge, the, next to Aubries, the Chipotle Aspen Dental Strip Center. They're working on another project in Alcoa. So we've partnered with them to do about a ten thousand four hundred square foot retail space between the Walgreens and their Junior Achievement Center. So we're applying for this TIF to help with our site work proposal. And we're also, I talked to Roger about our access road. We have been trying to get a median cut with TDOT, and we're unable to do that. So we're having to bring an access road back to Frank Price Boulevard to, to come out at the red light. So we're looking forward to this little retail center. I think it's going to bring some, some much-needed shopping and maybe some restaurants to our city. Any questions?
Right, any questions for Kristi?
Kristi, how many businesses do you anticipate putting in there? Any ideas?
We have a, I mean, it just depends on space, you know, six, seven.
Six, would you anticipate any type of road reconfiguration, I guess, of getting in and out of your strip mall?
No, right now, we have the ride-in, ride-out, that's grandfathered in. And we're going to bring our traffic behind Walgreens, we're going to bring a road in. There's another lot three of our development. So we're going to have a road between, behind Walgreens and, and Lot Three coming to Frank Price Boulevard to get our traffic back to the red light.
Sure.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number Seven Eighty-four passes. Resolution, Resolution Number Seven Eighty-five, this is the TDOT grant application that Roger was talking about earlier for the TAP grant fiscal year two thousand twenty. Here a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
This is for Phase Two.
This is Phase Two, yes. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farron?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, Resolution Number Seven Eighty-five passes. Any old business before us? Any new business? We got a lot of things going in our little town.